Monday, January 8th. Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority Meeting. We are here actually to begin our organizational meeting. So I will turn the meeting over to our solicitor, Adam Boyer.
All right. Hello, everybody. So because this is the first meeting of the year, we have to conduct a reorganization meeting for purposes of electing officers. And as soon as we're done with that, then we're going to adjourn that meeting and roll into our regularly scheduled meeting that we typically have. So in my capacity as being the interim chair of this, are there any nominations for Chair of the Authority?
Make a motion for Mike Malawicki.
Second.
You're getting railroaded, man. Mike, I'm assuming you have no other nominations?
No, that's it. I'll do it.
There being no other nominations, can I have a motion for nominations to be closed and for Mike Malawicki to be appointed as Chair of the Authority for 2024?
So moved.
Is there a second?
My second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Oh, you, Mike.
Well, thank you, everybody. I appreciate the faith you have in me and the fact no one else wants the job. The next thing is we have to nominate a Vice President.
Yes, and we have four people currently in the Authority. There's five slots, one of which is vacant, and I understand the council's going to be filling that shortly, but as of now, we can't appoint somebody who's not in...
Actually on board.
So your choices for other people, and I should have mentioned this earlier, for these officer roles to be filled are the three of you, obviously, as well as Pat Nogal, should you wish to draft him.
John, would you like to do vice president?
Sure.
Okay. I would like to nominate John Lawver as Vice Chair.
Second.
Thank you, Charles.
Second.
Thank you. Not hearing any other discussion. All in favor of John Lawver as Vice Chair, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any... No one is in the negative, so congratulations. Thank you very much.
That's three to zero, right?
We are going to move on to Secretary. I would like to entertain nominations for Secretary. Charles, are you interested?
I guess process by elimination, sure.
Okay. Or I could nominate Pat.
It's fine, yes.
Okay, thank you. So I am nominating Charles Strauss as Secretary.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Not hearing any. I will make a motion that... Well, excuse me, I already did that. We will vote. All in favor of Charles Strauss as Secretary, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. There was no dissent. Thank you, Charles. Now, can we do all of these appointments by...
By one, yes.
By one vote?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I will read the other appointments for the Gettysburg Stormwater Authority. Motion to appoint Adam Boyer as Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority Solicitor. A motion to appoint C.S. Davidson as Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority Engineers. A motion to appoint Charles R. Gable, NPA, as Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority Administrative Manager. A motion to appoint Sarah L. Stull as Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority Right-to-Know Officer. A motion to appoint Karen M. Michener as Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority Recording Secretary. A motion to appoint Deborah English as Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority MS4 Coordinator, and a motion to appoint Tammy Muradoff as Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority Accountant.
Second.
Okay. There's a second to that motion. Any discussion? We're going to take this as one vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Thank you, Charles. Any opposition? Not hearing any. Those folks are appointed. Thank you. We are now going to end the organizational meeting. Anybody opposed to that? Not hearing any opposition. The organizational meeting is over and returning to our Stormwater Authority Business Meeting. I'm calling it to order. Welcome, everyone. I have no announcements. We have approval of the agenda, minutes, and other business. This information was sent out to us earlier. The agenda was sent out, the bills and payroll, and the December minutes as well. Anybody have any comment on those items? Because we will take one vote on all three. Someone like to make a motion to accept all three of those items as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Our second.
Thank you, Charles. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Not hearing any. Those items pass. Public comment? No public comment. Financial updates. Revenue and expenses, 2023. What's the update?
I guess I do a brief update on this every month or at every meeting of the Stormwater Authority. And before you, tonight, is the year-to-end number for revenue versus expense. So in 2023, the Stormwater Authority brought in $533,230 and spent $195,221, which leaves a fairly robust surplus of $338,000 for the year. There is another about $300,000 sitting currently in the Stormwater checking account, so that would bring us to, you know, in the ballpark of $500,000, $600,000 liquid cash available to the Authority. And if you remember the budget that you passed last month for 2024, after our billing cycle begins in July, we would expect to be probably around $1 million, maybe a little bit more than $1 million by the end of next year, assuming that we don't spend down some big, big things, which we all know we have some big projects in front of us.
We are anticipating spending that money. I don't think we'll ever see a million dollars.
No, no. We'll be spending some of that before then, I'm sure.
Any other questions? Deborah?
We sent out the 30-day notices, which would be due on February 8th. So they have their final warning notice. We were able to add the certified mail because normally we have around 34 to send out. For some reason, we had 111. So we sent out 111 certified mail and first class because we're required to do both. I got one payment in today with the full amount, and I had one person pay the previous amount without the postage fee on it, so I got to figure out how to work that out in Freedom, but it shouldn't be an issue. So hopefully, we'll get more than half of those paid up by February 8th. If not, then Adam and I would work on liens at that point. We had a couple of addressing issues. There's a little hiccup in there somewhere where I changed one the last couple of years, but it keeps reverting back to the previous owner. So I am writing off some of the late fees and the certified mail since they didn't get it. So I'm working with some folks with some issues in the system. So other than that, we had 111 go out, and we sent the first class and the certified out the same day, so they should have received them, I believe, by today, maybe at the latest tomorrow.
Okay.
And not much has changed with the payments. I maybe got one or two in since then, but right now, the balance due is $24,116.76.
Thank you. And we're on a cash basis, not on an accrual basis, so it is what it is.
Correct. And that's with the late fees. Without the late fees, it's $23,100, so...
Okay. Okay, thank you. Adam, do you have any comments on liens?
No, as Deborah said, I mean, not really. As Deborah said, the practice of the Authority per its rates, rules, and regs, as well as per statute, is that these letters go up first class and certified. If I recall in the past, basically, if there's 80 letters that go out, roughly 40 people pay.
Right.
So hopefully, you know, that continues. Getting a certified letter gets people's attention generally, which is the point. You know, you want to make sure they're aware of it before you file a lien, which nobody wants to do. If there are addressing issues, we're not going to file a lien if somebody... If it was addressed to the wrong person because...
Right.
For a number of reasons.
Absolutely.
Because people tend to throw away mail if it's not addressed to them, even if it comes to their house. So we can look at that as we get closer, but...
Yep. And I, as soon as I get the new addresses in from Adams County, which is about a 30-day lag, I update them right away. But we had some weird connection issues with the Regulated Rental Units address changing, not syncing with the land, and it was messing up some of my addressing. So we're working that out.
And every year, there are usually two or three that, for whatever reason, they went to the property, but they were addressed to, you know, a prior owner who left two years ago, and I don't know where that comes from. But in that instance, we don't file that lien.
Right.
We deal with that.
We collect what's due.
And as soon as I find out, I try to readdress it, resend it out, and I check multiple different address options, or if I have an old email or phone number, I try to call them and, you know, find out the status because it is difficult to track them down sometimes.
So hopefully, that this number will go down. It certainly won't go up, but it'll hopefully go down substantially.
Yes, I hope so.
And as we get closer to February...
To February.
Just give me what you always give with names and addresses because that's helpful and lets us get started.
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
That's all.
Chad, it's your turn to update us on Bream Alley.
And if it's okay with you, and there's two items on the agenda here that are just updates, no action required for either of these, but I wasn't originally anticipating to be here, but because of the snow, some plans got canceled until I'm here. My original plan was just to submit an engineers report to you guys so you can have everything in writing. You have that in front of you. So if it's okay with you, I'd like to view is just run down through this report real quick and give you some highlights.
Please.
There's nothing new with Stormwater Management Reviews. We just haven't had any submitted. The Stormwater Ordinance, as you know, I did present the first draft of some things with that, and the end of the season got here, and I didn't get a chance to push that across the goal line. So that's going to be high on my to-do list this year, so anticipate that in the next couple of months. Try to get that ordinance pushed across the goal line. The COPS Run stream restoration, give you a couple of updates there on that. Everything from last year, as you know, first of all, maybe just to recap where we stand on that, is that the permit... The project was completed a little over a year ago. Last year was a maintenance period where our consultant land studies has been going out and spraying invasive species, making sure that there's no erosion, those kind of things. It's holding up pretty well. That's the report, that's the short of it. So they haven't had to go out there with equipment or anything like that and fix any erosion. It's just really about spraying the invasives. They have a report on that on an annual basis to keep compliance with our permit. They'll have to do that for, I think, three more years. So they have sent us a revised contract for this year. Didn't get a chance to take it. We just got that at the beginning of this year. I'm going to get a chance to look at it before today's meeting, but that'll be on your agenda for next month to take a look at. But again, I don't anticipate anything too out of the norm for that. The other thing is that land studies applied for... Of course, last month, I presented to you guys that there was this opportunity to apply for the Governor's Award for Environmental Excellence. Land Studies did complete that application pro bono, then charges for it, and that was submitted. So I read it, Mike read it, looked good to me. Charles, I believe you read it, right?
Thought they did a good job.
Yep, and I distributed it to you, to everyone's email as a response to the agenda last week, so we'll wait to hear back from that. Next item on my report is the Bream Alley Channel Wall. I did give you a couple of updates there. The DEP perm is received. We're in the process of working with Buchart Horn and getting the packet, the bidding packet included with what they're doing for Municipal Authority for their interceptor project. The big-ticket item here is the second bullet under the Bream Alley. We did not get the ARPA funds, the H2O funds, for that project. So essentially, if we got grant funding, that would have paid for most of this project. Now it's going to fall back to that MOU. If you remember, we signed an MOU with the Gettysburg Municipal Authority in which we're going to pay 2/3, they're going to pay 1/3. I gave you that update on estimate two months ago. I reiterated that in today's report. So our 2/3 would be about $157,000. And I'm guessing...
That depends on what the bids are.
Completely depends on bids, yep. That's on our best estimate at this point.
Right.
GMA was hoping to get started sooner this year, but now it's looking like it's going to be later this year until they get under construction. The reality is, until this wall gets built, it'll probably end up being next year.
Right. And where are they going to start their construction?
Usually at the bottom, which is Water Street.
Right.
That's where they... If the interceptor Phase 1 project went from their treatment plant around the northern side of the border, or the borough, and it stopped at Water Street. Now they're going to be picking up...
Where specifically, on Water Street?
No, is it right along Stevens? I mean, close to Stevens.
No, they went... I thought they went down to the bridge.
To the bridge on Washington?
On Water.
To the bridge on Water Street. Yeah, that sounds right.
The bridge on Water?
You know where the new Schipensburg Physical Therapy is, right there on that block?
So it's East Water.
Yeah.
It's East Water.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So they're picking up...
They're picking up on the other side. And they'll come across Carlisle.
Yeah.
That's going to be fun. Okay, got it.
So you can see, if they start there, by the time they get to the Bream Alley wall, it's going to be, most likely, next year. So it'll certainly be next billing cycle, which is after July, according to Charles' report there. The other thing that I... Well, wait, I already told you about the schedule. So I think we're moving on to Stevens Run Channel Wall analysis. I did mention last month that we were looking at the wall in Farnsworth House. Followed up with the property owner there. He's working on getting some cost estimates at this point. Not sure if, Adam, if you wanted to share anything else at that...
So I got the searches back today, this afternoon. I did not get a chance to look at them in any detail, really, except that there is something recorded. There's three properties there, and I searched them all because I wasn't sure. Property values change.
What owns it?
Yeah. But they're all owned by the same person. There is something recorded regarding the channel walls on what we think of as the Farnsworth House. I did not look at it beyond that, but there is something there from, I think, the '50s, maybe, so...
At this point, the bottom line is, we're still gathering some information.
Right.
How much is this going to cost? First of all, we're getting some estimates from contractors. And secondly, does... Who has the responsibility for ownership and maintenance? Is it the property owner? Is it Stormwater Authority? Is it some type of combination?
Yeah.
So again, no action right now. We'll get... Once we get more information on that, we'll follow up.
Okay.
Gettysburg Interloop Phase B project, some more bad news here. Well, first, we've got about 75% of the design complete. We're still working with GMA on some stuff with the water line. But again, seeing bad news, this project was not chosen for the H2O funds. This is a big, heavy hitter here. That was a $1.8 million grant, of which 50% was the match. So it was $900,000 that we were kind of hoping for to help support that project. So since we didn't get that, a lot of that, the burden of that cost is going to end up coming back to the authorities, the borough and Municipal Authority and the Stormwater Authority here for their individual utilities. We... The other thing that I wanted to say there is, I gave you the third bullet there. I gave you an estimate of what that would be. The Stormwater Authority has $343,000 is about what we're estimating for that.
Can I just interrupt for a second and say, is that $343 broken down into various components? For example, it goes through my mind is, we know at some point we have to drill under the railroad. Is there a separate and discrete number, hopefully less than 343,000, that that could be accomplished at some point even before this is done, covered back up, and ready to go when the money is appropriated? And does that make engineering sense? Because to me, that's a big-ticket item and a really key item that's only going to get more expensive as we go down the road. And if we're waiting for all this money and we have that done at a lower price, you know, I don't know if that makes sense for me.
Yeah, I think I understand the question. Let me answer, and then you tell me if I answered the question. But so the $343 includes the boring under the railroad tracks.
Right, yes.
It includes the inlets, the stormwater piping, just temporary road restoration, not permanent. That's part of the bike loop project. So it's really for the stormwater components of the project that goes from Stevens Run, where we're going to connect to the, on North Washington Street, where we're going to connect at the bridge, we're going to punch through the wall of the bridge, and it's going to go up underneath of the railroad track on Washington Street and then to Racehorse Alley. Stops at Racehorse Alley.
On the west side of the railroad?
West side of the road.
Right.
That's correct. Yep, on the west side of North Washington Street.
Right.
And it stops at Racehorse Alley. It does not... It's... We've set it up so it's deep enough to fix the ultimate goal, which is to fix the issue at Chambersburg Street. But the stormwater pipe currently will stop at the Racehorse Alley just because we don't have the money to build the rest of it at this point. So it is included there. I don't know what that number is off the cuff here. I can give you the estimate for just the boring component, but I'm not sure if it would make sense to do just that boring. Like, that piece that I just described, the $343,000, almost kind of all needs to be done at the same time.
Okay.
Got to get from the creek, got to get under the railroad tracks, and the only appropriate spot to stop is right there at the alley. And part of the reason why is because there's two other components to that. There's two water lines in that street that need to get moved.
On that side?
One of them is right on the same side of the stormwater pipe. There's one that was kind of partially abandoned on the other side. We're going to be consolidating them into one new water line. So that needs to move first. Second part of the project is the new stormwater pipe, and those kind of are going to be back and forth, how they're going to have to cycle the...
Got it.
Make the construction to work there. And then the other thing that's really pushing the schedule here is, in order to be able to do the curb and sidewalk component, which is getting paid for largely by CDBG, that needs to start this year. CDBG funds are... We've been pushing, kicking the can here for a couple of years now, and the CDBG funds need to be spent by the spring of 2025. So that's all our curbs and sidewalks, and you can't redo the curb and sidewalk until all these utilities are done. So these utilities really have to start this year. I don't know that we can kick the can any further down the road. It's got... We've got to start the construction of the utilities this year in order to be able to spend CDBG by spring of '25.
So what you're saying is the fourth, the $343 is going to be certainly spent next year from our coffers?
Yes.
This year?
This year. Probably, yeah, probably later this year. It might be after the July collections, but it's going to be in the year '24, most likely.
So if you... So quickly do the math. Say it's $350,000. Say it's $200,000. I'm just making these numbers up. It goes up instead of 157, it's 200, rounding. So that's $550,000 out of these funds that we just talked about.
Are you looking at half a million dollars? Yeah, you just take the two numbers that I gave you, and you add them together, and it comes out to exactly $500,000.
Yeah.
But yeah, you're looking at half a million dollars of funds over the next year, year and a half, which is back to the conversation we had earlier, whenever Charles was giving you the report of available funds, and Mike said, eh, it's not a chance that we're going to see them.
That's right.
Okay. So, go ahead.
Is GMA on board? I mean, are they ready to move on this also?
We met with them. They're aware of the projects. They're working with us. They're taking... They're out there helping us try to find all of these old water lines and everything. That's as much as I know. I don't know if they're 100% on board with all of these expenses.
Well, John raises a very good point that, you know, they got to move first. They got to go first, right?
Oh, yeah. That's the way that works.
So are you formally meeting with them and saying...
I'll be following up with Mark and seeing where they stand with things.
Please, please, because, I mean, they're going to be busy, focused on the sewer interceptor.
Yeah, we were still, just last Thursday, we were still... Both Mark and Rob from the Authority were up at my office, and we were still rationing out exactly, trying to figure out some things that they might abandon. There's a water line that goes down Racehorse Alley that they might abandon. There's that piece that went to the old flower shop and the laundromat that had been kind of abandoned, and we're still trying to figure out some of the logistics, and then we can get a cost estimate to it. And you know what I mean? So in order to put the horse before the cart, we need to know exactly what the scope of the project is, and then we can come up with an estimate, and then we'll have to make sure that GMA is on board with that expense. But you're right, I know they have a lot of other things on their plate, too, so that's an important question.
Is there a possibility of bidding those together so that we can save some money there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Have you talked to Mark about that?
Yes. Yes, right now, that, yeah, that's the plan, is that we're going to build them together, and we presented that to Mark, and for instance, we've gotten bidding's technical spec information from Buchart Horn for that. So yeah, that is the plan. It'll be two different projects, storm and the water, but it'll be one bid.
One contractor, hopefully.
You got it.
I'm smiling because you're going to be digging up Carlisle Street, then as you head west, you're going to dig up Water Street. Then, coming up, you're going to dig up North Washington Street.
You know, we were just... We were looking at each other and smiling because we were... We know that the way this is working out, they're going to follow up the same construction season, too.
Yep, yep.
And it's what are they saying?
It'll happen July 1st, 2nd, and 3rd.
Well, GMA's project's big enough that it's going to affect the tour season and the college season. There's just no way around it.
Yeah, I got it. I got it. Just a way...
But one year, and it's done.
Yeah.
Then it's done.
Yeah, if we could get it all together, that would be terrific.
Bite the bullet and be over with it.
Yep, yep.
So moving on then, the last thing is the Lincoln Island and John's Master Plan. You authorized me to get started with that last month. We did start pulling mapping together and starting getting inventory of that. I don't have a whole lot to report today on that, but the only thing I wanted to say about that is, of course, the reason why we're moving ahead on that is because Columbia Gas wants to do a lot of work in those areas, and so does GMA. And knowing what we just said about spending all of the money that we have and not leaving any for this project, that's going to come into play. So as we move forward with this master plan and kind of give an estimate of how much that's going to cost, then we'll have to start having a conversation with those two utilities to make sure that our projects are being scheduled appropriately. Because my guess is, without hitting any other grant funding here, those two projects Because my guess is without hitting any other grant funding here, those two projects are going to just have to get pushed. That's the only, that's the, something's got to give, right? Either you got to get more money from grant funding, or we got to start pushing a project. And my guess is that one's going to get pushed, kicked back. Now that'll be the proverbial can that we kick down the road.
Well, the way our luck has been with grant funding, I say not only the Stormwater Authority, but the Borough, GMA, it's not good. And so, but we're not going to give up. We're going to still apply for those grants that we think are viable for us, and hopefully work on a strategy that brings us more success with these grants. Okay, thank you very much. Well, it's a very thorough update. Any questions, comments? Good. Charles, you still there?
I'm still here. Yes, I'm still here.
You're a good man. Thank you for staying on. Appreciate it. Any comments?
No, everything's clear.
All right, okay. Well, we hope to see you next month for our February.
Yeah, I'll be there.
Are we meeting in February?
Yeah, we, February is a.
For our new person.
For the, yeah, for the new person, and then.
March is our first year.
Yeah, and then we're off in March.
We're even months.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments from the board? Anything? Not hearing any? I want to pay a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, especially you, Charles, and.
It's called to order this meeting of the Borough of Gettysburg Business Meeting for January of 2024. Let's start ourselves off, as we always do, with a moment of silence and a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. If you don't have any opening remarks, we'll get right to announcements. The executive session will be conducted immediately following the adjournment of this evening's monthly general business meeting, consistent with Section 708A1 and Section 708A5 of the Sunshine Act for the following purposes. One, to provide information and to discuss matters involving the employment and terms of and conditions of employment of current Borough employees. And two, to review and discuss matters of Borough business, which, if conducted in public, could lead to disclosure of information or matters of confidentiality protected by law. I hope everybody has had a chance to review the agendas as well as the minutes. I need a motion to approve the agenda for tonight, for January 8th, 2024.
Salute.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the agenda? All in favor, please signify aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And then we need a motion to approve the minutes of the Borough Council Meeting of December 11th, 2023, and Council Organization Meeting of January 2nd, 2024.
Removed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. That takes us to public comment. This is open to topics on the agenda for this evening. Please limit yourself to five minutes. Please use the podium, and please state your name and your address of residence.
I'm so close to you. Brian Hodges at 137 Ridge Avenue. First, before we get into what I want to talk about, which is the legislative agenda you have for 2024, I just want to congratulate Mr. Moon and Ms. Butterfield for president, vice president. It's awesome. And we congratulate Ms. Sanders and Mr. Vale for being sworn in, winning your elections, and Mr. Carr for winning again and being sworn back in. Really, really nice. So I've read the legislative agenda, items that are posted in the agenda today for 2024 that identify four items, the rezoning of the Borough, the sign ordinance, a sidewalk ordinance, and a code enforcement ticketing ordinance. And these are all very big tasks, and it's going to take a lot of time. But I feel there are two that are missing that I would like to, you all, consider. One would be the oversized vehicle or bus parking ordinance, and second, the transient retail vendor ordinance. The Gettysburg season, even though it's January, will be upon us very quickly, and buses will be descending into our downtown area again very soon. They're not going to go away. Last year, the Borough did try a bus pilot parking program where there was designated zones, buses would go park there, unload, or park in the street, unload, and then try to find these parking spots. That didn't really work out so well, so it was, the idea was nixed. But right now, buses, again, will be looking for places to park. Where are they going to load? Are they going to stop in traffic? So I really, the Upper Crust here, I spoke to Linda earlier today, she's got 200 buses already booked so far for this season, and there's going to be a lot more, I'm sure. And at this point, I'm really wondering why the Borough cannot allow the Upper Crust Restaurant to have reserved parking in front of her business, to load and unload and then park. Majestic Theater, I noticed, for, I think it was a Christmas Carol, six buses down Carlyle Street, some in front of Majestic, some in front of the other business on the opposite side on Carlyle Streets. It worked well. People could unload safely. It was effective, but I think the same should be true for restaurants. Loading and unloading, and then parking, parking directly in front of a restaurant, such as the Upper Crust, will be safer and more efficient than having a bus park directly in front of traffic, try to unload, and then the bus is going to wander away, trying to find a place to park blocks away, or park first, and then, a lot of the buses are children. The play, I think there were children crossing streets and crosswalks and all that. And even Chief Glenny here agreed last year that parking directly in front would be the safest way to unload, as long as the parking is paid for by the vendor business. I'm not sure how this hurts the Borough at this time, so I'd like you to please consider adding restaurants to the ordinance. Second is the transient retail vendor ordinance. As it is currently written, food trucks can park anywhere in the historic district downtown as long as they have a permit, whether a monthly permit or an annual permit. The time allowance is like any other vehicle, which has a three-hour maximum time period. So if a car parks there or a food truck, that means they can park, the food truck can park in front of any other restaurant, anything other business, could be a competitor. Brick and mortars, there's many problems with this, mainly certain food trucks will park there all day, way beyond a three-hour limit. Some food trucks even advertise they will be at a certain location downtown from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So obviously, they have no inclination to possibly move. I think that's really a slap in the face of the current ordinance. I actually brought this up last year when President Heiser was president, and he said he discussed it last year and to wait until there was a new council. Well, here we have a new council, so I'm bringing it up again, and would ask you to please look at that, restrict the food trucks, enforce the ordinance. Something needs to be done. You here all have the power to fix these problems, so I'd like you to take action on these ordinances. So thank you. Thank you for your time.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we will move on. Takes us to current and new business. First is the Planning Department. I'm going to ask Manager Gable to introduce our new colleague here, Mr. Whitmore.
I am very delighted to introduce John Whitmore. He is the new Planning Director, Department. His official title is Director of Planning, Zoning, and Code Enforcement. Mr. Whitmore comes from Cluxburg, West Virginia, where he was the Director of Economic Development. Prior to that, he was a senior planner in Morgantown, West Virginia, and before that, a city planner in Parkersburg, West Virginia. He does hold his American Institute of Certified Planners certification, which is a very prestigious credential in the planning world, and he has two degrees from Virginia Tech. One is his Bachelor of Arts in Public and Urban Affairs, and has a Master's Degree in Urban and Regional Planning. So welcome, Mr. Whitmore. It's great to have you on the team.
Thank you all very much. It's a pleasure to be here this evening and to be assisting the Borough.
What reports do you have on your first six days?
I learned my way around the building.
Well, we look forward to a more robust report from you next month. I trust you will let anybody in this room know if you need any help getting settled and getting resources. That takes us to Ms. English with the Historic and Environmental Preservation Department.
Thank you, Matt. I have my report. The only big thing, we did send out our final warning notices for stormwater, so property owners that haven't paid for the 2023 E cycle, they are due by February 8th, or the potential forlooms on those properties will be processed. Thank you.
Is there any questions from Ms. English? All right. We do have a motion there on Harb business, if anybody would like to make that motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendations of the Borough of Gettysburg Historic Architecture Review Board, Harb, following its review on December 20, 2023, and grant certificates of appropriateness for the following applications as presented. COA 230094, major project 21-23 Chambersburg Street. Deborah Sabra for the proposed replacement of the two second-floor rear windows not visible from the street with vinyl extrusion windows as presented in the application. Dated November 20, 2023, COA-230095, major project 202, Carlyle Street. Gooney 45 LLC for the proposed replacement of the roof with asphalt scallop pattern hinges, shingles, siding with in-kind wood lap siding and windows extruded PVC or clad wood as part of the exterior facade reconstruction due to severe fire damage, as presented in the application dated November 21, 2023. COA-230096, major project 402, York Street. Giovanni Kuhuza for the proposed enclosure of 140 square feet of the front porch to be used as a restaurant server station, as presented in the application dated November 22, 2023. COA-230097, major project 444, Baltimore Street, the Welty House, and 452, Baltimore Street, the Brick House Inn, Lance Zyle for the installation of an aluminum ADA handicap ramp on the side entrances to each of these structures over existing steps and without alteration to the existing walkways in order to access their front entrance ways, as presented in the application dated November 6, 2023.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this?
I'll just make a comment that I appreciate anybody in the Borough that is willing to make their building and their business handicap accessible, and that is possible to create an ADA-compliant aluminum handicap ramp on top of an existing stairs or ramp that's not ADA-compliant, because I have one on my building. Bravo to those that do.
All right. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It takes us to Ms. Fizzle and her report from the Parking Department.
Good evening. You all have my report. I have the comparisons for December there. I was off between Christmas and New Year, so I did not have time to do the full-year comparison that I normally put in my report, so I should have that done in the next week or two that I can send out to everyone. There were 41 LPPs in December. There were 19 reserved parking spaces in the parking garage, and I think that's it.
Great. Do you have any updates for us on any of the capital improvement projects you were working on, the kiosks, et cetera?
The kiosks have been ordered. They said it would be about 12 weeks, so we were about probably eight, nine weeks to go yet. And I'm still looking into the challenges of this full sign with our multiple options of the garage. It's difficult, but I'm still looking into it.
Great, thank you. Anybody have any questions from Ms. Fizzle?
Can you just, for our new friends on council and our public as well, can you explain again what the LPP is?
The LPP, you can, for $35, it starts the first of the month, ends the end of the month, and you can park at marked meters. It has the Borough flag and says LPP on them. There's a 100-plus all of the third block, West Lincoln and West Broadway. You can park there anytime between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 2:00 a.m. As long as you have the LPP, there's no need for any other payment for the $35.
Are there any spaces in the garage for the LPP?
No.
So it's just street meter parking throughout the Borough?
On the marked meters.
On the marked meters.
And they're generally like the third, fourth blocks. They're not right downtown.
No surface lots. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Fizzle. Takes us to the engineer, Mr. Claybaugh.
Good evening, Council. You have a copy of my written report in your packets. Welcome, new council members. Just so you understand how my engineer's report works, is I keep track of, a lot of projects I'm dealing with take multiple years to deal with, so some of the old items will be regular font, and the new items are bold, and they come to the front of each one of those items. So you're welcome to take a look at my report and ask me any questions you have there with that. The only other items there that I wanted to highlight, on the bottom of the first page there, I gave you an update on the Gettysburg Interloop Phase B project. I am going to be asking to be on your workshop agenda in a few weeks from now, at the end of this month, to give you an update on that project. The big-ticket item is that we applied for H2O funds, a $1.8 million grant application. We were denied with that. So we're going to be regrouping and taking a look at the scope of the project and see if there's anywhere we can shave anything and try to minimize the project as much as possible so we can still move forward. We have to move forward with this project this year in order to meet the deadline for the CDBG money. CDBG money needs to be spent, that's community development block grant money, needs to be spent by spring of next year. So the utility work associated with this project needs to start this year. So again, at the end of this month, I will be doing a more detailed, thorough presentation on where we stand with the scope of that project. And the other thing is, I wanted to just mention on the third sheet of my report, I gave you an update on the Gettysburg Station project, and I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. There's a traffic impact scoping analysis that was submitted by the developer. There still hasn't been any land development plans. It's not on the planning commission meetings for discussion at this point. It's just to determine the scope of the traffic study. How many intersections are they going to be looking at? That's been going through PNDOT at this point. It hasn't even started the process of a full-blown traffic study yet. So whenever I get the full-blown study, then we'll be doing some additional reviews. Obviously, we'll go through the land development process, but I wanted to make sure that it was clear. If you see that Gettysburg Station is really, this is just to determine the scope of the study. That's all it really is at this point. With that, I have nothing to, oh, I'm sorry, there is one other thing that I wanted to add. So in December, you appointed me as the zoning officer. A few days ago, you appointed John, so I had a very short stint there as your zoning officer. One of those weeks is during Christmas and New Year's, when I was off on vacation, so there wasn't a whole lot to report there, but there's about five items with that, along with a couple of land development projects. I do have a meeting with John this Thursday, and I'll be, rest assured, that well, everything will be conveyed to him properly, and we'll be getting ready for our planning commission meeting next Monday. So at this point, I am no longer your zoning officer, and now it is John.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for the engineer?
When you mentioned that we were denied some grants, do those folks that we are denied, do they have any type of representative that is allowed to give us any feedback on these grants that we're submitting that keep getting denied?
They do. They do. I'll tell you your enthusiasm for getting solid information back. We do have, our grant writer reached out to them, and the answer we got was, it was very cookie cutter. There were so many grant applicants and not enough money to go around, and it boiled down to that.
For sure. Thank you.
Any other questions for the engineer? Thank you, Chad. It takes us to the Police Department, Chief Glenny.
Mr. President, would you like to circle back to public works?
I'm so sorry. I didn't mean to. Public works.
Wait, okay.
Mr. Harbaugh.
Good evening.
Has climbed down off his plow to join us this evening.
Thank you, sir. Good evening and Happy New Year. You should all have my report. Couple highlights on my report is, we started collecting Christmas trees for recycling from the residents on January 2nd. Residents urged to drop the tree on top of the curb or along the edge of the alleys and not out into the street, and we will be coming around, collecting them for recycling. And we do not take artificial trees. Leaf collection has been completed for the season. I'll have numbers, total numbers of brush and leaves that were collected last year next month. And all of these special event blocks that we pre-stage are all back at our shed and stacked up and ready for a new season of special events.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. I'm sorry I skipped over you there.
It's okay.
Are there any questions for Mr. Harbaugh?
The, yes, you don't take artificial trees. Just a reminder to folks at home, you also don't take trees that have lights and ornaments on them. They need to be cleared and then put out for you. I'm sure some people have done that before. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Chief Glenny.
Good evening. As Mr. Horvath said, Happy New Year. You all have got a copy of my. You all have got a copy of my report, I'd be happy to explain anything, one or two there, there's just a couple of things I'd like to go over a little bit more. The main one is the two-two officers. Officer Chilco graduated from police academy on December 21st. Mayor Freeling, Officer Raderello and I attended his graduation ceremony, and then directly after the graduation ceremony, as we did with Officer Wenrick, when we hired him, Mayor Freeling swore Officer Chilco'd in. He is now here, and he's working with Officer Orth, and he is an FTO and doing well. Officer Raderello is still an FTO and doing extremely well, and Officer Raderello will be out of, out of FTO in a relatively short period of time based on his previous experience. And Officer Chilco will be in FTO a little longer, but he has no previous experience. So we're really happy to have them aboard, they're both doing well, and very happy, I can't say that enough. I think the next thing is, we had a couple of special events in the month, they all went, apparently Seem was asleep, we had a tiny bit issue at the Christmas festival with some traffic, but that was cleared up really quick, and we're, have some, had some thoughts for next year as to how to ease that, some of the burden on those lights up and backing up traffic. It was a fairly busy month, call-wise, it's really all I have, I did include the total numbers for, for 23, just to encapsulate, so I think everything was pretty much right on par, there's nothing, no numbers that seriously alarmed me with raises or going down, so kind of on par. And as far as the motion we have on there, our management meeting, our leadership meeting, we couldn't remember if we had already had council vote to authorize the Civil Service Commission start a process for sergeant, which we may shortly find ourselves with vacancy in. So, I guess it couldn't hurt to put a motion on agenda and have it done again if it was already done.
Yeah. If somebody would like to make that motion, if we get a motion in a second here, we can then discuss the purpose of this.
I'll make a motion authorizing the provision of notification to the Civil Service Commission of the Borough of Gettysburg of an anticipated vacancy due to a pending retirement for the position of sergeant, and to formally request that the Civil Service Commission proceed with the conduct of the required written and oral examinations consistent with its rules and regulations for the establishment and certification to the Borough, Borough Council of an eligibility list of applicants for promotion to the position of sergeant in the Gettysburg Police Department.
Second? Second, Mr. Carr, thank you. All right, so the backstory here for everybody before we vote, we have a long-serving sergeant who is due to retire. Decades of service to this borough, both as a police officer and as a firefighter and other roles as well, has decided to move on to the next chapter of his life, and we wish him well, sorry to see him go. The process of replacing a sworn officer is subject in Gettysburg to the Civil Service Commission, which is a system designed by the federal government to make sure that our hiring is done in a fair way. It gives preference to people who have served the US military, and it creates a system for testing those who are interested in these positions to make sure they are qualified. If we vote to authorize this today, the Civil Service Commission will begin the process of preparing that testing regimen for any applicants who are interested in moving up into the position of sergeant here in the borough. Are there any questions?
Yes. So it's just a test to make them eligible for consideration for advancement into that position.
That is correct.
It's not guaranteeing them that they're going to be granted said position.
No. All applicants who are willing to test have to score beyond a certain threshold, and then anybody who surpasses that threshold will be assessed by the Chief of Police, he will make his recommendations to council, and council will then decide whom amongst the people who have achieved the correct scores they feel is most qualified. Typically, we would go with the Chief of Police's recommendation, but that is not We don't really work with these people though, so we would be slightly foolish to ignore his advice.
So if I may, Mr. Carr, it, right now, if you want to promote sergeant today, you could, because there's no eligibility list. So we've got to get the Civil Service Commission spun up to put them through the process to give you an eligibility list. It's not making council do it, it's kind of permitting council to do it, if you will, because it will provide you with a list of names that you can choose from.
That list will be valid for two years, is that correct?
Yes.
If we don't promote from within that list, it will expire in two years, and if we wanted to then fill a position, we would have to initiate that process again.
Gotcha. Two more questions, has, and the test is created by the Civil Service Commission?
The test is typically purchased by the Civil Service Commission in a similar manner as they did the new hire test, and there's, there's several vendors out there, I would suspect they'll use the PA teams again, I believe that's who they've used in the past. This is called Standard and Associates First Line Supervision Test, it's a national test that, that is curtailed more towards each state that they put it in, so.
And I see that it has a written and oral examination with it, does it, is there any physical test with it?
There is not, it's a, a, the only time there will be any type of physical test is, according to Civil Service regulations, you must promote from within unless there's not a qualified candidate, and then you can go outside. If you were to go outside, then there's some other things that would have to go on top of that, a physical exam, a psychological exam, background checks, but those things aren't necessary for promoting from inside.
And my final question is, has this officer, a member of the Police Department officially made a resignation yet, or a retirement notice?
He has submitted a letter of intent to retire, though he has the right to revoke that.
Okay. Appreciate it.
What's the anticipated deadline or timeline of this pending retirement, do we?
I believe it would be mid-April.
Okay, thank you.
But this gets the ball rolling where we need it to, for a proactive assessment. Okay, thank you.
Is this for any part-time or full-time officers?
Pardon me?
Is this for any full-time or part-time officers, or is it?
They have to be a full-time officer, and there are some qualifications, they have to have X number of time, you're either five or six years in borough employee, or as a police officer, not in borough employee, and I think that's the only qualification to take the exam.
We have to have a vacancy before the Borough Council can act, but of course, the Borough Council needs an eligibility list prior to that. I would also note that in the rules and regulations, that in the general examination requirements for the promotion of sergeant, a veteran's preference is not applicable to promotion decisions for the sergeant position, is that correct?
Yes, that's what the regulations state, they're generally only for the initial hiring is where veteran's preference comes into play.
Thank you. All good questions, any others? All right, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It takes us to the officer of the manager and the treasurer. Oh, before we go there, thank you, chief, I also wanted to take a moment and challenge my colleagues here. I hope that over the course of the next year, even if you've already done this before, but especially for our new members, I would invite you all to make the time to do ride-alongs with our officers. I would say that we should try to each do this two or three times, do it with different officers, do it at different times of day and different times of the week. I think it's important that we all make an effort to get to know the people working our department better and to see what it is they do on a daily basis. It's meaningful to them, it's meaningful to the public, and it definitely changes the way we perceive our department, so please all make that effort if you can. I spoke with the chief about this previously, you can arrange this with him or through Sergeant Pruey. All right, thank you all. Thanks, chief. Mr. Gable.
As of December 31st, the borough received $7,155,000 in revenue with expenditures at $6,950,000, which gives the borough a surplus of around $205,000 for fiscal year 2023. Those aren't necessarily hard numbers until we get that finalized to the audit, which we are beginning to do as we speak. With regard to the account balances for the borough, there is currently just under $1 million in reserve funds in Pliggett and just under $2 million in liquid cash in the checking account. There's about $1.6 million in, between capital projects and capital reserve for capital projects, and another $628,000 in liquid fuels, which is generally for roadwork. Revolving loan has about $309,000. The council has undertaken a concept that was talked about earlier today, tonight in public comment regarding sidewalk program. The borough would like to investigate the opportunity for revolving loan for property owners to repair those sidewalks, become ADA compliant, and be less of a tripping hazard. Lot of policy decisions need to be made there, but that's the kind of the high-level view of that. So all said, currently, the, there's about $7.68 million in borough accounts. That, I have no other additions to my report, my written report, unless you need some clarification on any of the motions before you.
Ms. Stoll, did you have anything for us?
I do not, my report was in your packet, I have nothing else to add to that, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for either the secretary or the manager? All right, so we have a, an assortment of motions ahead of us here, would anyone care to kick us off?
I'll move. A motion to approve all bills and payrolls for the month as presented. A motion to appoint Tammy Murdoff as a representative.
One at a time.
One at a time, okay.
We have a motion to approve all bills and payrolls for the month as presented, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. A motion to appoint Tammy Murd-, oh, I'm sorry.
A motion to, I was going to let you run. A motion to appoint Tammy Murdoff as a representative to the York Adams Tax Bureau and to appoint Lisa Angstead as an alternate to the York Adams Tax Bureau.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Charles, would you mind speaking to the purpose of this?
I can do that, and I, I will just, if you don't mind, I'll read right off of my report. So the York Adams Tax Bureau collects and distributes earned income tax for 124 municipalities and school districts in York and Adams Counties. All residents of Adams County and all residents of York County except West Shore School District file their annual earned income tax returns with YATB. The Bureau also collects local services tax, delinquent per capita tax, and mercantile business privilege tax for some of its members. The York County Earned Income Tax Bureau was established in July of 1966 by a board of directors comprised of one member of each participating municipality and school district to administer the earned income and net profits resolutions and ordinances as adopted by the various taxing jurisdictions. The name of the Bureau was changed effective in 1983 to York Area Earned Income Tax Bureau by the Board of Directors at the board meeting on July 26, 1982. The name of the Bureau was changed a third time effective in 2003. The name of the Bureau was changed again in 2006 to the ex, the York Adams Tax Bureau when the Adams County Earned Income Tax Collection Agency merged with the York Area Tax Bureau. The original Act 511 rules and regulations were approved by the Board of Directors in 1969. The dates mentioned in the original rules and regulations applied to the 1966 calendar year and the months following on a calendar year basis. So this motion appoints the borough's delegate to YATB. There's your history lesson for the day.
Very thorough, thank you. Are there any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And the next motion?
A motion to appoint Tammy Murdoff as a voting delegate to the Adams County Tax Collection Committee and to appoint Lisa Angstead as an alternative voting delegate to the Adams County Tax Collection Committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Any questions for Mr. Gable? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to set monthly general business meetings of the Borough Council for fiscal year 2024 commencing at 7:00 PM on the following dates, and authorize the provision of public notice for business meetings on those, but these are all 2024, and except for the October meeting, they will be on Monday nights. So we have February 12th, March 11th, April 8th, May 13th, June 10th, July 8th, August 12th, September 9th, October 15th, November 12th, and December 9th.
That, November 12th, is that also a Tuesday or is that a month?
That's Tuesday, yes, I'm sorry, October and November, both Tuesday.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Okay.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make another motion to set monthly work session meetings of the Borough Council for fiscal year 2024 commencing at 7:00 PM on the following dates, and authorize the provision of public notice for the work session meetings. These are all Mondays except for May 28th, and they're all in 2024. January 22nd, February 26th, March 25th, April 22nd, May 28th, June 24th, July 22nd, August 26th, September 23rd, October 28th, and November 25th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Do this last one with dates, I guess, this is a motion to set the fiscal year 2025 budget work session meetings of the Borough Council for the fiscal year 2024 commencing at 7:00 PM on the following dates, and authorize the provision of public notice for the budget work session meetings. Monday, October 21, 2024, Monday, October 28, 2024, Monday, November 4, 2024, and Tuesday, November 5, 2024, if needed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to set the Borough Council's legislative agenda for 2024 to include the following: borough-wide rezoning, sign ordinance, sidewalk ordinance, code enforcement picketing ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Gable, can you speak to the intent?
Yeah, so it's been staff's struggle, if you will, for lack of a better way of saying it, that various councils over time would interject other priorities above and beyond the top priorities that a previous council had set, for example. And at the end of the day, it turned out that various council members were making priorities that were like 20 items long. And so really, when you have everything being a priority, that means nothing is a priority. So this motion is to essentially say, these are the four big-ticket items the council would like to delve into this year. We all understand that things change, and something may arise that surplants or is of more importance than the four listed here, but this is just the baseline to get the year rolling so that staff knows where to focus its time and resources to help you prepare for policy options.
All right, so looking over that list... All right, so looking over that list, I'm sure nothing there jumps out as a surprise at anybody. The sign ordinance, we came within feet of carrying that over the goal line. Did I do a sports analogy? I don't know. But it became clear that we needed a bit more discussion on that. But the intent is to finish that in the first half of this year. We have a lot of work to do on the sidewalk ordinance. We need to update that. We need to make sure that there are mechanisms in place for property owners to repair their sidewalks, to keep them passable. We have been designated as a sustainable and walkable community. Time we start investing in expanding that access. The Borough-wide rezoning initiative is ongoing. We are working with a consultant who is helping us craft our new ordinance. The existing zoning ordinance is out of date and has been held together with Band-Aids and baling wire for the last few years. So replacing it is crucial. And then lastly, the code enforcement ticketing ordinance. We took the step 18 months, two years ago, of actually hiring a code enforcement officer, bringing code enforcement in-house instead of using a third-party service. This has been beneficial to us for many reasons. The third-party service we use, their concentration is on the universal construction code and less so on the local ordinance. But they also are short-staffed and overworked, and they had to prioritize certain aspects of their charge. So they concentrated on the UCC violations and code issues. They rarely had time to deal with the local ordinance in the manner that we wanted to. And our previous planning director figured out that we could bring this in-house and actually save money and have somebody doing a lot of that local ordinance enforcement that has been lacking. However, we have the enforcement officer. We have the software platform that will allow them to operate. But what we don't necessarily have is clear empowering ordinance to start writing citations. So if we would like to empower our code enforcement department to actually begin their work in earnest, we need to give them the ability to do that. That's why that one is new, but that's why it's on this list. Any questions about any of those four things? Yes, ma'am.
We heard from someone in the public earlier today regarding two other issues, the one on oversized vehicles and then the transient retailer vendor. I'm just wondering, this is a lot, and I know that it's going to take a lot of work. But given the fact that we were asked about these other two, what do my colleagues think about?
Well, I'll comment back. I appreciate the public comment for these two items. I'm hopeful that the transient license issue, since it was mentioned that it's not being enforced, I'm hopeful that if we can tackle this code enforcement ticketing ordinance, that maybe this employee can then enforce that a little bit better. If I'm wrong, please tell me. But the oversized parking thing is a major issue, and it's not going away. We no longer have the giant parking lot over at the, whatever it was called, over on Steinware that closed down after the American Battlefield Trust bought that property. They're all coming here. I greatly appreciate that we have a giant restaurant downtown that can have all these buses, bringing them directly to the heart of downtown. I appreciate that greatly. I hope that they also visit all of our other businesses. But the fact remains, there is not parking available for these buses downtown short of them dropping them off at the square or dropping them off, stopping traffic, and then going over, parking over at, you know, talking to the middle school or talking to Hack Gettysburg or talking to the fire department and parking and waiting to be called back to said drop-off point, you know, and picking them back up again. It's a problem that's not going away, and we are a tourist town, and I do want to see these buses. However, I will note again, I do not want to see oversized parking for RVs. I want to see buses, tour buses, school buses. So I do think it's an issue that we need to continue to discuss because it's not going away.
Okay.
That's my comment.
Any other input here?
Right, so these are the like big-ticket items, as you said, Charles. But as other issues arise, this can be, they can be added in and things can be boot around depending on the precedent.
Yes, the purpose here is to typically, we would draw sort of a roadmap for what the legislative priorities will be for the year. Nothing we do is quick. It all takes months and months and months. From public meetings to legal review to drafting a new ordinance, advertising to, you know, the public, public hearings, et cetera. Nothing we do is quick. So sort of mapping this out gives us a roadmap for the year and gives us those big-ticket items to work on. But yes, there's nothing stopping us from adding any other issue to the agenda at any time. Okay. Does anybody have a strong feeling about amending this list?
I mean, I have a strong feeling that I think that we need to, we need to continue to try to find a solution for bus parking. And we know that that's an issue. We tried a pilot program that frankly, I don't think was what we thought it was going to be. Not to say we can't try something again. I would encourage that when we, if and when we do try another pilot program, it be during the peak of tourist bus season. But even if we wait till then, we've got buses coming. It's not going to stop. We know that. And until we continue to identify some solutions, we're just going to keep doing the definition of insanity, just doing the same thing over and over again, waiting for a different result.
Yeah, I would read this motion says to include the following, but not just to focus on just those four things. So I would assume we would look at those two things.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That takes us to liaison reports. I believe Ms. Sellers is there in the back. Main Street Gettysburg. For the benefit of our new members, would you just give us a few seconds, explanation of Main Street's role in the Borough?
Thank you. I will indeed. Well, welcome to Mr. Bales and Ms. Sanders. It's very lovely to have you here. I look forward to working with both of you. Jill Sellers, President and CEO of Main Street Gettysburg, which is a nonprofit organization founded in 1984. We do economic development and historic preservation in the Borough. We do that through grant programs and a lot of reach back into federal grant programs, private grant monies, all in an effort to create a vibrant downtown and provide as much relief to our taxpayers as possible by providing infrastructure projects and other grant programs to our businesses and sometimes residents of certain programs, depending on how those fall. So if you ever have any questions, I am available and happy to talk with any of you. So you have my report, just a few things tonight. So we did issue an annual report at the end of the year, kind of highlights where Main Street Gettysburg was last year. I've written copies, and there's also copies available on our website. If you are so interested, I'd be happy to discuss that as well. We had a Christmas festival meeting today. So I mean, we were just done a month ago yesterday or something, and here we are. But already planning for 2024, going over what worked well, what needs adjustment, but just very thankful for the Borough staff, certainly the sponsors, people who donated time, talent, prizes, and effort all the way around, and just, and a big shout out to the volunteers, again, that made that happen. We're also working on statistics and surveys that are going to give us some really hard data on the number of visitors we had, what kind of economic impact it had for the Borough and the organizations and businesses and what they saw downtown on that weekend. We continue to work on the Baltimore Street project. This is something that is ongoing. We continue to, we're just starting to look at the new funding notice for the federal program under USDOT. So that's the 2024 Raise Grant Program. And this is a $14 million project. As we've looked at it over the last several years, that's where the master plan came from. So we're continuing to look to how we can solve that as we talk about things like sidewalks and other things. We certainly have had this on our radar for a very long time. None of this is affordable, you know, on our own municipal budget, obviously. So we're looking for this to be a big-ticket project, and we're looking for avenues that we can find funding that will solve that problem from that whole, the entire corridor. So that would be from, the plan is for, from the cemetery to Lincoln Square. And so it's a huge project. It's something that hasn't been attended to in its entirety in many years. You can see that by your own walk down the street. So that is definitely something that we focus on. You mentioned earlier about the Safe Sidewalks program. So one of the things that Main Street Gettysburg is going to be doing in 2024 is reintroduction of the zero-interest loan program. So that could be an opportunity for businesses to take advantage of those zero-interest loans to make some improvements. These would be for projects that don't qualify for a facade program. A facade program is always a street-facing project. It's always something that's going to better the, you know, the appearance of downtown. But the ZILP program allows for funding so that you can take on other projects in a building that need attention, and we can help you through those programs. So watch for announcements about that. And I'm happy to take any questions if anyone has one. Very good. Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gara, Mr. Carr.
I have one thing to note. For great health and physical activity, join Country Line Dance Thursday on February 1st, 15th, 29th, March 14th and 28th at Gettysburg Rec Park from 6:30 to 9:30. It's $10 at the door, line dancing with lessons. Have a great and happy New Year and get in shape.
Thank you. GMA, Mr. Berger.
I just want to highlight one of our capital projects. It's our new office building. We're renovating on 424 Middle Street. We're moving the current administration, administrative office up from the floodplain. So, but it's also going to free up office space at that current location for operations, maintenance, distribution, meter reader, and collection. So it's going to provide for future growth for GMA. Things are taking shape, finishing up the outside. Doors and windows are put in. They're connecting a new gas line. Then they're going to set up the rooftop HVAC units. And walls are all in place, and inside renovations are coming along. So they're looking for April to kind of get it all complete. But we'll see what happens.
Great. Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
All right. The bid, Mrs. Butterfield.
We were joined at the meeting last week by Borough Manager Gable, and that was a good thing. It sparked a lot of good conversation. It showed that the Borough values the Steinware merchants. And it also showed us that Steinware was an active, vibrant organization that the bid was. The elected officers, Nate Mayers will continue as president, Marcy Crop will be treasurer, Vice President will be Todd Mickley, and Secretary will be Susan Sum-Wicklin.
All right. Thank you. The Adams County Boroughs Association, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Adams County Boroughs Association is a group that gets together and talks about things of interest that affects Adams County. One of the major issues we have been addressing is broadening. It was really bought home during COVID that, you're a teacher, that a lot of people in Adams County do not have access to the internet. So that's one of the things, and the county commissioners came out with a program that's going to announce that in the, money, in the federal government. So we just sit and talk about things that are interesting, and I'm almost sure that I can ask if you can attend immediately, that you can learn more about what's going on in Adams County.
Yes, as a matter of fact, I think we were going to try to get a council presence there as well. I think it's important to-
Judy comes sometimes.
Excellent.
No, Judy comes, and Charles comes to the meeting.
Well, there aren't a lot of meetings that Judy does not go to.
But anyway, I'm sure I'll talk to Mayor Harris from Carroll Valley as the head of the group, and you can come. And this gives you other information to see what other issues are facing the county. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It takes us back to Mrs. Butterfield in one of her many meetings with the Adams County Council of Governments.
Yes, the Council of Governments consists of supervisors, council people, county employees, staff, and there is generally a program of interest to those entities. For the December meeting, it was all refreshments and networking. But it's an interesting group. It's an active group, and the people who participate really want to have a spirit of cooperation. And I think it's very worthwhile.
All right. Thank you. It takes us to Happy, Mrs. Lawson.
Yep, that's Healthy Adams Bicycle Pedestrian, Inc., organization. And they've been working tirelessly for going on almost two decades, I think, started by Tom Jolyn years ago, to create a series of trails that would eventually go down to Frederick Maryland and go up to Harrisburg with some spurs going down to Hanover, working with our engineer in the Borough to create the Gettysburg Inner Loop. And I'm happy to say that we just learned at the end of the year that we just received a $50,000 grant from Pell, Pell Windows and Glass through the work of one of our members, Lex McMillan, who was a longtime resident in Gettysburg and has moved back to the area and is a member of Happy. So we're pleased with that. I don't know if you, you heard that yet? Yeah, that's really great to have a company that's based locally as well.
That is great. Thank you. Oh, man. It's back to Mrs. Butterfield. ACTPO.
ACTPO, the Adams County Transportation Organization. For that group, conversation ranges from things like the best metal to use for rivets on bridges to traffic closures. Gettysburg specialized in that particular topic a few years ago when we had closures all over town. And at that time, there was lots to talk about as far as Gettysburg. It's an active group. It is organized and run by the County Planning Office. Andrew Merkel, who is from the county, is in charge of that organization. They do not meet monthly, and our organizational meeting will be on the 24th of this month of January, setting the meeting dates and the topics and the membership of said group for the coming year.
Thank you. And the trail feasibility study, Mr. Berger?
No, this group hasn't met in months, actually.
We're going to keep asking you.
Yeah, it's okay. It stalled. Let's put it that way.
So we have a list of organizations here that exist outside of the Borough that we belong to, different council members have liaised with those. That list is not set in stone with the exception of COG, which Mrs. Butterfield will fight you for. She enjoys it so much. So as we move on into the year here for our new members, if there are things that grab your interest and areas where you feel like you have skills to bring to bear, please don't be shy, and we may actually be coming to you with ideas in the coming days and weeks to see if there are places where you might be able to contribute. I do want to express gratitude to everybody who does serve in this added capacity on top of being in their council position. It is commitments of time that some of us find very challenging. It's fun to laugh, but the gifts of time that Mrs. Butterfield gives this Borough, anytime there is a deficit, she steps up and fills that role. So if we can share that burden, we should. Thank you. That brings us back to the recycling report with Mrs. Butterfield. That brings us back to the recycling report with Mrs. Butterfield.
I'm looking to setting up a recycling committee meeting on the 30th of January. We try to do this every six months or so, just to make sure we are on the same line of communication as our hauler, our contracted hauler. We meet with officials from waste management. We bring items that are questionable in their ability to be recycled, and they assure us yes or no that it can be. I think they're beneficial because it keeps the topic of recycling to the forefront, but it also shows our contracted hauler that we are paying attention to what they're doing and what they're not doing. And I think that's a valuable trait. They like to come because other municipalities ignore them. And we invite them, feed them, praise them all the time, making sure they're living up to their side of the bargain. So folks, get out there and recycle.
Thank you. All right. You have the fire department and EMS reports in your packet for your review. Are there any questions or comments about those?
I'll just make a comment that I have been looking for those reports, and my folder is empty. Same thing with the Main Street Gettysburg report. My folder is empty. It might be put in a different folder, but my folder is empty.
Let us revisit to that.
For Main Street, Gettysburg, and Adams County EMS.
Okay. We'll have to look at that. We've all been having synchronization issues that might be part of it.
And the Gettysburg Fire Department. I'll try to refresh and see if that fixes it, but it does not.
No, you know, Ms. Sanders and I were reviewing these folders yesterday, and you're right, GFD was empty and...
But Jill always does a great report.
EMS report didn't come in yet, so I don't have that one yet.
There might have been delays on those for the first of the year.
Yes.
Just so councils aware, if they're not, the fire department command structure changes the first of the year.
Yeah.
New fire chief, assistant fire chief and deputy fire chief come in. So the new fire chief's name is Ken Kine, Chief of the Department. So that may explain maybe a little delay in getting that report.
All right. Yes, indeed. All right. That takes us to elected officials' comments.
Are we going in order, Mayor?
You can do whatever you want.
Welcome, Ms. Sanders. Welcome, Mr. Bales, and welcome, Mr. Whitlock. If I can do anything that can assist you, please let me know. And you're working with a great group of people. Actually, I don't really have anything. I'm going to give you a little tease here. It's coming together, that love is in the square. We're trying to get together a program. Stop it, Matt. Stop that look. And Charles, you too. Anyway, we're trying to get together with Destination Gettysburg, Main Street Gettysburg is part of this too, to have couples renew their wedding vows. It's not going to be, Valentine's Day is 14th. It's a Wednesday, but we're, stop it. We're going to try to do it on the 17th of February. And it's a good thing to bring people into Gettysburg and to promote the town. And I think it's a great idea.
Are they in Civil War Guard or something? Or are they like...
You can wear whatever you want. And I'm going as mayor, I'll be the person renewing the vows. I think it's a good thing that'll just bring, a good idea to bring people into Gettysburg in addition to the Christmas festival. It gives that break there between January and Memorial Day. Get something buoyant in Gettysburg.
Are we charging them? Do we charge them? Are they being charged a fee or a license or something?
They have to get a license. They have to get a license for this. It's all under development, and I can give you the contact if you want.
I'm just curious.
Now, and actually, no, no, actually, it's in the law. They're not going to be charged for the ceremony.
Okay.
So it's just going to be, yeah. I'll just perform a little ceremony. I'm planning on wearing a little white tux with tails. Hey, whatever it takes.
Might there be a prize for the couple who've been married the longest?
Look, this is still, Judy, this is still under development. So any suggestions? That's a good one. Also, the hotel, I think, is going to give a groom, like a drawing for a room at the Gettysburg Hotel. It's all under development, but it gives us something to do between Christmas and Memorial Day.
I think it's a super name.
Thank you. And I, anybody, Sarah? Who else is married here? You can come down here. Deb, renew your vows.
What time are you doing it?
We, that has not been determined yet. It will be, it's the 17th, which is a ceremony.
Stroke of midnight.
Thriller, thriller night.
If we're going this way?
Sure.
So regarding, again, regarding Christmas trees, what is the last day that you're accepting trees? Robbie?
We'll collect them all the way up to the end of February.
All the way up to the end of February? Great. If you miss that, or you'd rather give your trees to goats, Sunt's from the bucket at 365 Blacksmith Shop Road will take your undecorated real tree, and the goats will appreciate it because they will eat it. Give a, I'd like to give a shout out to Robbie Harbaugh and Public Works for 19 years of service with the borough. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I just want to say that I'm really excited to work with all of you. I'm really looking forward to it. So, yes. Thank you. That's it.
Comment?
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for the warm welcomes. And I wanted to thank the Public Works employees for doing what they did over the snowstorm these past couple of days. I worked through the weekend, and I saw them working hard, helping us out. So thank you.
All right. That takes us back to public comment. The second section is not reserved to any item on the agenda. You can speak about anything you wish. We do still ask you to limit yourself to five minutes. Please use the podium. Please state your name and your address of residence.
Hi, my name is Linda Etia. I'm representing the Upper Crust, and I stand here and I think, Mr. President, one of your tenets is fairness, and that was something that you want to bring in to your presidency here on council. And I ask you to put yourself in my shoes as there are times where I'm on Carlisle Street and both sides of Carlisle Street have reserved parking bags on the meters, and there are countless buses on both sides. And you're providing a safe way to load or first unload and load passengers, mostly students, into the Majestic Theater. And I'm glad that the Majestic has that ability, yet for the Upper Crust's hundreds of buses, same students that come to the Upper Crust were forbidden to reserve parking spaces? How is that just? I ask you to resolve this situation because it's not right. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we will adjourn to executive session.